I'll call this meeting to order. Now, I'll be looking for approval of the agenda, but before we do that, I just want to point out that whoever is working from a hard copy, everything will be there with the exception of the thick fire services review report. So everything will be there. If you're not using a hard copy, part one of the of the agenda goes to pages 162, and that includes the the fire services report and part two goes from pages 163 to 293 in your computer. And and that does not include the report, but it has everything else, which also is in your, as I said before, in your hard copy. So from there, we'll, we'll carry on. I'm looking for a mover to approve the agenda. Counselor Hunter and the second year.
I'll say.
Deputy Mayor Deasham, thank you.
All right.
Barry, thank you. Thank you. There, I heard them. Yes, I did. Okay, now go to number three, which is disclosure of peculiary interest and the general nature thereof. None here. I hear none. Thank you. We'll, we'll move on. Business arising from the previous committee of the whole meetings and in your package, that's page 127. Any business arising?
None here.
Hearing none. Thank you. We're going to go to delegations and presentations and we have Mr. Brendan Bland on remote with us tonight. And he's going to give us a little overview of the site plan control. Mr. Bland, it's up to you now. Carry on.
Thank you very much. Do you have the ability to see my screen if I share?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Okay, I will take an attempt to share and hopefully it goes well. So.
We also have hard copies as well.
Excellent. Okay. Can you see what I'm broadcasting?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you all very much for allowing me some time to present the project we have going on at the Johnstown plant. If you do have any questions as we go through, please feel free to stop me and ask. I also have with me tonight, Michelle Renaud, who is my plant engineer and is, is definitely the person who knows the fine detail of all the technical questions. So. So we're very happy at Greenfield to be going through this project. I'll just give you a quick overview. Our vision, mission, core principles and core values. We, we always broadcast these at the front of all our statements. And obviously we're still very committed to the vision of less than 350. And we're still looking at unlocking the potential that we have with partnerships, nature, and accelerating sustainable solutions for the environment and the health of our planet. That being said, I mean, this challenge in front of us with respect to the pandemic is, is very different than anything we faced. So quickly last year, at the heart of the pandemic, the Johnstown plant was able to, to pivot and create a new technical grade of alcohol, which Health Canada approved for use in hand sanitizers. And that's when Greenfield as a business got behind the idea of installing and investing in new assets for the plant. So. PHQ, and I think Pat asked me at the beginning of the meeting, that, that stands for very high quality ethanol. So the ethanol we produce for fuel is, is not of the highest quality. There's many impurities there. The ethanol that we will be producing with the implementation of this project will be some of the purest ethanol in the world. And so what we will go through doing with the installation of this new equipment is literally stripping the impurities from the ethanol using energy and distillation columns. So the, the markets that we're going to be able to service and the products we're going to be able to supply customers who create these products will be sanitizers and cleaners, pharmaceuticals and manufacturing. So this is a very interesting one because every pharmaceutical company, whether they're composing drugs or composing vaccines, tend to use ethanol for sterilizing and even as a makeup ingredient for those types of products. Medical grade applications. So we all know it can be used as a sanitizer, but also it can be used for sterilization of equipment prior to surgeries or even treating, you know, something as simple as a heart valve replacement. Those are stored in some of our purest alcohol that's currently sourced at a Chatham. And finally, food and beverage is an option for us to work into as well. Any questions before I go on?
I have one, Counselor Hunter here. In your food and beverage application there, I'm being a make the syrup producer. We use food grade alcohol to sanitize your lines in the year. Last two years, we've had real problems with tourist suppliers to get that. We're considering popping into that, but we'd have a better availability of it.
Certainly, yeah. I, in fact, I remember getting a few phone calls last year in April, May on that exact subject with, you know, many industries that were using ethanol as a cleaner and a sanitizer previously. We're struggling to find it because of the shortage that existed within Canada for that grade of alcohol. If, if I can get your information following the meeting, I can pass it on to our sales group. If you're still struggling to find that because I believe we have stock at our warehouses.
We're available, able to get it this year. And then just, I don't know, just where C D L and Benny and Grimmer came to make syrup suppliers, where, where are they actually sourced from? I know I ran into a lot of difficulties over the last two or three years.
Yeah.
Getting. Would be interested in contacting them and seeing might be a market for you.
Yeah. So with this project, we're going to be adding about 100 to 115 million liters of product into the market. So, you know, fast forward to another pandemic at a later date. Canada and Ontario should not be having concerns about supplying the proper grade of alcohol for sanitizer applications. Just to give you a high level summary of the impact, I get the question many, many times in terms of the plant corn consumption. With this project, we're not changing the output of the plant. We're just changing the diversity of products we're offering at the plant. And so it won't change the amount of corn we consume on the front end. It is a, it is a project that's going to be a significant investment for Greenfield. Right now, we're looking at about $105 million. And as you've all probably heard, the cost of materials seems to be going up every day. And so we're challenged by that as we're going out to bid and, and getting our, our quotes back in. Really good news for the local economy is that because of the complexity of the process and the complexity of the supply chain, we're going to be servicing. This is going to add 20 new full-time employees to the site in Johnstown. And by 2023, I'd even hazard a guess that that will be up to 23 full-time employees. The big areas that we're touching are, are the rail and the tank farm. So that portion of the project, we're hoping to have ready to commission this September. The remaining portion of the project, we're hoping to have that commissioned and operating by March of 2022. Any questions on this slide, gentlemen? And ladies, if there's there any there.
Well, Brendan, you're, you'll run a 24 hour a day, seven day a week operation, right?
Yeah, the, the future of the operation, it'll continue to be 24/7 operation. And so we will be, you know, basically supplying customers. Once we build that solid customer base on a 24/7 basis. The thing with the, the approvals that go with all these new customers, it's very complex. So we will need to get approved by each pharmaceutical customer and get on their list of approved suppliers. And then same with food and beverage and medical grade. So as part of our quality system, it's, it's really going to drive a bit more complexity at the site level in our quality management system. Here's a picture, which we just got a, about a week and a half ago of the Johnstown site. It gives you a good sense of where we're going to be operating. And I've got a diagram on the following page, so I can walk you through, you know, the, the number of the changes. So we're, we're going very deep. I won't get into fine detail on each of these segments. That being said, we are touching almost every segment of the plant, as you can see by this. It's all within the existing developed site. So we aren't moving fence lines much other than the south fence line with the tank farm. One of the big first steps is the rail expansion. So we'll see the inbound rail change. We need to change the curvature that ties into their CN line. We're going to add a new lunchroom office, which is over here. We're going to add aqueous ammonia system in order to convert to pharmaceutical and food grade. We need to reintroduce ammonia to the site. This small tank here is, is called a fusel tank. So when I spoke about impurities earlier, this is going to be the receiving vessel that takes those impurities that come off the new distillation equipment. And then we will blend that back into our fuel grade ethanol. We're going to be installing a new boiler building over here. This is the reverse osmosis tank, which will clean up the water that supplies and makes that steam. Cooling capacity because of the huge energy draw that the system requires in terms of achieving this high level of purity. We needed to add more cooling capacity specific to that equipment. So two new cooling towers will be located here just south of the existing cooling towers.
Can I stop there just for a second, Brendan?
Sure.
Does that have implications for the draw on the water line from the river?
Yeah, we, we're going to need to be looking at that permit. And I believe the work on that starts towards the end of this month. And we're just going through and doing our calculations to see what our potential demand could be. Very good question. But in terms of all of our environmental permits, we need to, we're in the process of looking at our air and noise and submitting that to the MECP now. And we need to go back to the water and the sewage permits as well.
Okay, so there's an implication for the permit to, to take water. But there's also, and what is, is of greater interest to me is the capacity pipe. And when we originally built that pipe, we built it with 10% of the capacity paid for by the township of Eversburg Cardinal. And I'm just wondering, will your draw exceed the capacity of the pipe? Is there necessity for a new pipe? Or, and the second part of that question is, I think to reach full capacity on that pipe, it required a third pump at the, at the water intake well.
I, I believe. Oh, go ahead, Pat. Sorry. Finish your question.
We may not be at that, at that point yet.
So far, the preliminary calculations that I've heard would suggest that we, we'd most likely need to add another pump. So I don't believe we're into adding pipe. At the same time, I know the team we've got dedicated that is targeted to finish, you know, validating the process consumption, I believe, in the next three to four weeks. So we, we put our air and noise permit application at the head of the line because those are the permits we tend to have the longest time getting approval for. And then we've had much better luck with our, our water and sewage permits in terms of expediting those through the process. Michelle, do you have anything you may, may want to comment in there? I don't know if we've got cubes of volume to pull or anything like that yet. I think you're muted, Michelle.
Yes, I was. That should be better. Yes, we are finalizing the number. There will be an increased demand on the water intake. And like Brendan said, we expect that we will have to finance the installation of the third pump.
And how about, how about the actual volume capacity of the pipe? You'll be basically taking the entire volume capacity of the pipe itself, will you not?
I'll be close. Yes.
Okay, thanks very much. That has implications for job site challenge. That, that has implications for us for the job site challenge because on the job site challenge, we were anticipating that there might be some capacity left on that pipe to take to the job site challenge lands if we're successful in that. But that's, that's, let's not worry about that. Hurt in the hands, we're too in the bush.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. I mean, if you have any other questions, please feel free to pipe up and I'm hoping we can at least give you a specific volume estimate by the end of the month, Pat. And then we can confirm, you know, capacity constraints on the pipeline.
Thanks very much.
Thanks. I, I believe it was a point eight there. So we, as part of this, we would also install a new transformer and a new electrical room, helping the infrastructure. So our, our electrical consumption at the site will increase between two to three megawatts per year. We also see an increase in natural gas consumption associated with the new boiler to, to power the energy and the steam that we need for the unit. Point number 10 and 11, this is where we get into the new distillation columns and the new distillation units and their tanks that support the intermediate tanks. 12, this is going to be our brand new rail infrastructure where we will have the ability to load and unload as well as the proper spill containment in the event that we ever have, you know, leaking valve on the bottom of a rail car. Because of the addition of so many employees, we're doing a full locker room expansion to provide proper facilities for everyone. And then as part of the infrastructure with the lunchroom up here, there's an office space. And there's also an office space here in the shipping and receiving area for the employees and the department manager. We'll, we'll need to start ordering some new chemicals. One of these chemicals or many of these chemicals are known as denatrans. So that will make product that is not destined for, for food unfit for human consumption. And then down here to the south of the property, these will be the storage contain, uh, tanks for all the new products as well as the spill containment. And, and finally, within here, it's hard to see, but we're, we're completely redoing our current lab facilities and adding resources and equipment to be able to support the shipping and certifying of these new products on a 24/7 basis. Any questions?
So Brendan, yeah, Brendan, this was originally when we had the announcement, it was a $75 million project. But I see now you're using the number 105 million. So it's, it's expanded quite significantly from the original announcement.
It, it really has. And based off of some of the feedback we're getting on the price of materials, I, I'm, I'm cautiously going to expect a little bit more increase. Part of the big change from the 75 million that was announced in the fall and now would be, I believe the 75 million, we had not considered the rail option in that scope and added it in since then, Pat.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Are there any questions from our two remote advisory members, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush?
No, no questions here.
No questions here.
So does, yeah, that I'm, I'm at the last slide now. So just to summarize, it's a $105 million investment. We're looking at 20 new employees and we're really hoping to be commissioning as of March 2022 for full production.
Well, I'll just make your comment, Brendan. We're pretty excited for you. And I know that later on in our agenda, we'll be dealing with your site plan agreement, the amendment to your site plan agreement application. And I know that I think we have a recommendation from staff that we proceed on a sort of a sec, a segment by segment basis. So good luck with your project and it's quite exciting. And we look forward to March of 2022. And a lot of, a lot of activity in between.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. I very much appreciate the support from everyone there. And we're very excited to be part of the community.
Brendan, your, your site plan control will come up at item 7A. If you want to stay around on, on remote, that's, that's quite permissible and it's entirely up to you.
Okay, yeah. I'm more than happy to do this.
Great. Okay. Okay. Are there any further questions for Brendan? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you to the discussion items, which is now 6A. And the first one is the regional fire services review. And I believe Mayor Saeal would like to highlight this. It's also in your package.
Yes. Now, actually, I think it's going to come up twice, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So the, the larger report that you referred to at the beginning of the meeting was discussed at county council. I was there when the, when the report was made. And then I'll just speak further to it, I think, when we get to 7E because the, the chief has got a, a point to make. And I wanted to support that point and perhaps take the action from his report.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just bypass 6A for the time being. And then we will just carry on then with 6B. And I believe that is also your, your request to give us a heads up on this as well.
Right. Now, I, I spoke about this at the last meeting about the letter that had come from the Minister of the Solicitor General. I think it was dated March the 18th. And the Solicitor General has given us until June the 7th, I think it is, to come up with the plan for how we would reorganize the new police services board for the county of Grenville. And there are a number of different concepts within the seven mayors of the county of Grenville and that being Merrick, Wolford, North Grenville, Augusta, Embersburg, Heartland, Creston, five mayors, sorry. So there are, there are five mayors and at least three different opinions as to what the board should look like. And I guess all I want to report at this meeting is that North Grenville has now put together a date for the five mayors to meet together. And I didn't know that at the time that the agenda was being prepared. But that meeting will take place on Wednesday, April the 21st, between 4:00 and 5:30. And if there are other members of council that want to join me at that meeting, I'm, I'm pleased to take the meeting here. It'll be a Zoom meeting and other members of council can audit it if they wish to do so. It, it's going to be Wednesday, April the 21st. That's as well.
Yeah.
And what was the time again?
Four to 5:30.
Thank you.
And then following that, of course, we have at 6:30, we have the port management committee meeting. So that's all I'll say to that at this point, Mr. Chairman. I, 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 I guess I should point out that I think it's, it's going to be very difficult to arrive at a consensus from the three different options that are being put forward. And, you know, I, I think that we've, I'm going to say this in front of council in the public arena. We've made our representations to the minister, to the Solicitor General on why we think, say, think that things should stay the same. And we made our representations as to why we think there should be two police boards in, in the county of Grenville. We've made all those arguments, but the Solicitor General has come back to us and said, look, there's going to be one police board. We want you to know, we want you to tell us how it's going to be structured. And she's outlined a basic structure. And I think it's time now to offer all of the various, the disparate voices to come together and speak with one voice. Because it's clear from the Solicitor General's letter that if we don't speak with one voice, the government will speak for us. So I'll just add that. And we want, we want, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And we're now at 6C, which is the Council of Aquasasne, the transfer of Adams or Prison Island. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you would like to tackle this as well.
Yes. Now, this one is a big one. And you all have the March letter, March 29th letter from the district chief of the Mohawks of Aquasasne. And so the letter is clear, these four islands are going to be transferred as an addition to the Aquasasne Reserve. It's a federal program. Municipalities in the province have no say in how the, how that program works. So the long and the short of it is, in the letter that the chief has sent to us, he does indicate that they're prepared to listen to concerns. And I've taken the liberty, Mr. Chairman, of drafting a letter, which is on your desk there. And I would like to take a minute to just review the letter because I think it's important that this letter go out now. And I'll explain why as we go through it. And so it's just about six paragraphs. I'm just going to ask you to hear with me. I want to go through it. So thank you very much for your letter of March the 10th advising of the proposed transfers of four islands from material power generation to Aquasasne Reserve number 59 under the national additions to reserve policy and inviting expressions of concern from municipalities. We note that one of the islands, Adams Island, also known as Prison Island, is located on the St. Lawrence River, lying immediately in front of survey lots 13, 14, and 15, concession one of the county of Eversburg Cardinal. Adams Island is located less than 500 meters from the south shore of the mainland and is our concern that Aquasasne may now or at some future time require municipal services of some nature. For example, garbage pickup services, fire protection services, planning and zoning services, water rescue services, land-based access services, et cetera. Please be aware that the county of Eversburg Cardinal does not provide any services at any of the islands on the St. Lawrence River at the present time. I want to make that clear because I didn't want there to be any unrealistic expectations in view of the fact that Adams Island is located, you know, some 30, 40, 50 miles. And I'm using the word miles west of the main body of the Aquasasne Reserve. So the letter goes on, we do recognize that Adams Island is well positioned for future development. And while we do not present, at present, provide the types of services mentioned above, we are of course interested in working with Aquasasne to provide such services in the future, should your plans for future development so require. And I want a council to be comfortable with that paragraph. I'm going to want. We believe that Adams Island has great potential for immediate development of seasonal recreation facilities and would be interested in exploring such opportunities with you. In the meantime, in order to address our concerns, would you please confirm to us that Aquasasne is aware that the county of Eversburg Cardinal does not provide any island services of any kind, is in no financial position to do so, and that should such services be required in the future, we would be pleased to enter planning discussions well in advance of the time required. I mean, you can't, what I'm trying to say is you can't come to us three months before you do garbage services and ask us to provide it. In closing, please, and then in the last paragraph, I just point out that we do maintain a seasonal boat launch ramp in Cardinal made through October, which allows some distance from Adams Island is available for public use when open. In closing, we wish you well in the proposed addition to Reserve number 59. And you'll notice that I've copied the, the person that he's referred to in his letter as well as the mayor of the county of South Dundas and the warden of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Gen, Genvery, where three of the other islands are located. And I want Mr. Clark and Mr. Vera to also be aware of our letter. So, Mr. Chairman, I think we should have some discussion on this letter because I would like to get this letter out as quickly as possible. His, his letter to us was dated March the 10th and I, I apologize for being so late bringing this up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to call for discussion. However, before I call for around the table here, I'm going to ask our two remote advisory members, Mr. Packwood, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush, do you have any questions or concerns for Mayor Saeal regarding this?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Mark.
No, I, I don't think so. Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. That's fine. I'll start with Counselor Hunter to my right.
No, I don't really have any concern with it. I think it's, we need to reach out and make it quite clear to the right service. We gotta be the political game, we're all in the dark. So.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. Through the chair, just a couple of comments. I think it's inquired about this island to the C A O much earlier this year. As I have been approached a couple of times for. As I have been approached a couple of times for people that were interested in developing it. So I had certainly, when I saw this come forward, certainly certainly reminded me of that of that conversation and you know, there is, I think the mayor said it in the letter, there is enormous development opportunities here with a tourist-based economy in our area. I think you know, I'd like to have it for ourselves, but certainly working with with the First Nations on this would be fantastic.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor Dillbo.
I just have one question to the chair. When does it actually close? Is there any date on that?
The letter, the letter states ninety days from, it looks like, March ten. The letter of opposition should be sent. And if no response by the end of ninety days, it will be understood that the municipality has no concerns with this addition to reserve proposal. So the the last paragraph on your letter from Aquasasne spells that.
No, what I'm saying is, as interior power generation already transferred to four islands. No, it's a proposal. Okay, it's a proposal. Okay. Because it says transfer four islands and interior power generation. Yes, but the reserve number. To reserve number fifty nine. Yes, but read the first paragraph. Yes, okay. Pursuant to this, well, yeah, the relevant municipal governments are to be consulted regarding the proposal to return to reserve status, the lands noted. Thank you. No, that's all. I'm all for it too. We can work together on that.
Okay, okay. I have no, no questions or concerns, Mr. Mayor. I think the, I think the letter leaves out the the good mail with the county.
One question, the CEO can answer. When did the interior power generation actually become ownership of these islands? They don't, I don't. Sixty years ago, we passed your cattle on there. We paid to the Mohawks. We used that island, so.
Through, through the chair, I I I am not sure of when when OPG came in possession of that.
Well, I I can tell you that it was during the Seaway.
Yes, way back.
Yeah, it was during the Seaway years. And and I can remember my grandfather worked for Hartman. Prescott, DLD, Dominion Lighthouse Department. And I can remember going with him to an island in Cornwall and telling the lady on the island in Cornwall that her island would be flooded and would be taken over. And 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 all of those islands, and as a matter of fact, this one called Tucson Island and the one called Preskill Island, they were all, part of them, part of them were created. And you can see from the maps that they give us, that they've given us, you can see where the dredging was done to deepen some sections of the river. And you can see from the contours on the island where the material from the bottom of the river was brought up onto the islands.
Adams Island, a lot of it was built through the Seaway, which is.
Yeah.
That's what I understand.
I just wonder, because I know we used to have to deal with them to grandfather and Tom Lynch used to rent by and all the time they had them down and somebody down there and had a fee every year for take account of the number of cows you put across and pay so much ahead for them to be over there.
Count them when they come back. Okay, if there's no more questions, thank you, and I'll move on. And our next, now we now move into the action information items, which is number seven. And seven A is the Greenfield Global Site Plan Control. And I believe, is Wendy with us or is Mr. CIO or are you speaking to 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 this?
Mr. Chair, I can I can speak to it relatively quickly, I I I believe. So ju- just to follow up in addition to to the Greenfield presentation earlier.
Yes.
It's a it's a relatively big project on a tight timeline. And typically with our site plan amendments, we typically sort of have everything in place and sort of approve that site plan before work begins. The 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 reality is that this is a little bit outside of of the norm. And what we're proposing is with our planner and engineer of record on onboard, that we will sort of approve the 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 items and stages. And then once, once all those stages are complete, we return to a council to to incorporate the those amendments into the into the site plan.
Good. Thanks. Thank you very much. And this this does have a recommendation. And the recommendation is just approximately what CIO Grant had had just had just mentioned, that committee recommended council by resolution allow construction to proceed at the Greenfield Global Site as approved by staff in order to make Greenfield's timeline for each phase of development due to the urgent need for alcohol-based products. And that the site plan be brought back to council for final approval once all components have been approved by staff.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to
Certainly, go ahead.
interrupt you there. I I think that the that the recommendation needs an additional word added. And it should be, and that the amended site plan be brought forward to council. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about an amendment to the existing site plan. So that would be just the word amended in front of the word site plan in the second last line. It's the amended site plan is to be brought back to council for final approval. I mean, you can see from the drawings that Brendan provided, there's quite a few additional buildings and rail lines and tanks, et cetera. Those are all amendments to the existing site.
They're all within their in their
Yeah.
boundaries of what the original site plan covered, so.
So I'd be pleased to move that recommendation, Mr. Chairman, if the word amendment is added to that to that recommendation.
Mr. C, Mr. CIO, can we make just a friendly amendment or a friendly amendment with the word amendment?
Through through the chair, you certainly can.
Very, very good. Okay, I'm still looking for a mover.
No, I moved.
You you moved it, and I'm looking for a second. Or Counselor Dillbo, thank you for the amended recommendation with the word amended. All in favor? All right. Carrie, thank you so much. So Brendan, it's been carried. You can move forward.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Very exciting.
Brendan, the yeah, now the the question of getting the amended site plan in your in your possession. The 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 recommendation that we just passed sort of sees everything completed, but I don't know that the work has to all be completed before you get your amended site plan, but so I would urge you to kind of pursue that with our planners and our staff. And get it back to council as quickly as they'll bring it.
Okay, very good. I mean, in the worst case scenario, if it means we we need to appear as we complete construction during different phases, I'm happy to come back.
And I don't think that should be necessary, given this very, very comprehensive overlook of things here today.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is seven B. And this is the first quarter fire report in your hard copies. It's on pages forty seven to fifty. And Mr. Moore, Chief Moore, would you highlight your report, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first quarter of twenty one, we remain fairly uneventful with a low total of thirty four calls. Fire losses included a tractor trailer that was a Canada Post products on Highway sixteen. It wasn't mailed, but it was all there in boxes and everything else. And on a shed and an electrical fire in a car. Updates and changes to department on page two. The Phase Two Environmental Report was received for Station Two. One borehole water sample was found to contain hydrocarbons. So there'd be some additional testing completed to verify the results and see if we can develop a renovation plan. Training courses for the first quarter were pretty much dominated by first aid and CPR. We did have two members completed a fire instructor program. And you'll notice towards the bottom that only twenty four courses, online courses were completed. That's a lot lower than than we typically see. And that would be due, I believe, to a combination of pandemic fatigue. And our our recruits are are doing the firefighter run program, which is all it's all being done in person as opposed to using our online platform.
Okay.
Fire prevention activity. John Henry, who was formerly with the Prescott Fire Department, has joined us to assist with some proactive fire prevention. Activity for officers toward the Port of Johnstone Ship Loading Project. And that would be three from Edwardsburg Cardinal and the deputy chief from Prescott, I believe. All members have been tested for their SCBA masks. So that's that's the testing we use to make sure that everybody's got a proper fit, that they're not going to get any contaminants inside their mask. Burn permits told users in the system as of first quarter was fifteen hundred and fifty two. Eight hundred and eighty nine permits were created in the first quarter with seven hundred and fifty two burns registered. And just on to page four is the updated fire department roster with the inclusion of the ten recruits that started January one of this year.
Yes, I I noticed I noticed that beside their name. Thank you. All right. Do we have any questions for for the chief and and his report? There is there is no recommendation on this. It's a it's an information item only. So I'll start with Counselor Dillbo.
I just have one. I don't know if you can help me out, Chief, but we found we bored a hole down there where the new hall is hopefully going to be. And it says it found contained hydrocarbon. What is that?
Through the chairs, so they found traces of, I believe it's diesel fuel.
Oh.
They believe, yeah. It'll be interesting when they when they do another sample because we did have some some equipment parked there, like over the summer, some paving equipment and stuff like that. So it's not in an area I would have expected to find fuel. They didn't find fuel closer to the public works where, you know, we had trucks for years. So I'm really surprised they found anything there. So I wouldn't be surprised if the tests came back clear after the winter. Could be the Zamboni room too. Could be like that that way. Okay, thanks. The only fuel there was broken.
I know it'd be diesel back then.
No, don't think so.
That sense, whenever I drove there, it was all broken.
Mayor Sayo, do you have any any questions or concerns?
Yes, I do. Not not related directly to the report, but indirectly. So we have a partial fire ban on right now. But it's countywide. And I'm just wondering when that would come up for review again.
Through through the chair, the chiefs agreed to talk about it again. Towards the end of the month, I think we schedule it around the original end date of the stay at home order. Which would be next week, I believe, was the original, the original date.
Yes, next week. And my question is, are we are we pretty much committed to the fire bans being the entire county as opposed to township by township? Because I don't think that the that the conditions are necessarily the same in Edwardsburg Cardinal as they are in Westport or the west side of Rita Lakes and the Thousand Islands. Or Rita Lakes, yeah, Rita Lakes. So I'm I'm just asking that question. And I, is there a strong commitment there?
Through the chair. Primarily, it was the whole messaging thing when it when it came out that everybody because I'm sure everybody's on social media and they talk about there's a bird man here and why can't we do this and why can't we do that? So we thought it'd be good to be consistent. But there there's definitely nothing stopping one municipality to to break ranks because we've all got we've all got different priorities and and different municipalities, right? I don't know. Answered your question?
Yeah, no, no. Thanks very much. I'm going to bring that. I'll bring that idea of countywide, I'll bring that up shortly.
I just, I I just have one quick one, Chief, if you can answer it for me. The you mentioned the army shed catching on fire. Could you could you be a little more explicit as to the cause on that?
Through the chair, I really cannot. It was it was undetermined. It was kind of a remote area. It was on a shed that was had some some updates done to it inside. There was a with burning appliance inside and some electrical. But by the time it was noticed and and we got there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all I have. Deputy Mayor?
No, I don't. I don't think I have anything either.
Okay.
They've been into it already.
Okay, and Counselor Hunter?
Just one on our staffing here. I assume we've got thirty members now in Station One twenty two Station Two. I assume we're at a maximum complement now because we used to have a complement, a maximum of twenty four at each station. Now I think we've got twenty two and thirty. This where you're cutting it off at?
Through the chair, I believe council gave direction some years ago that we would just maintain. I don't think there was a hard number. At least I've never been told there was there was a hard number. But yes, there 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 is some extra bodies at Station One that I'm anticipating some retirements in the near future. So hopefully, we will not have to do a lot of recruiting in the in the north end in the next couple of years.
Okay, and on your fire report there, on the losses there, I think that one loss of a car, it's a very valuable car, five hundred dollars. Car or something, or was it? I don't think it was on the road, that price.
Through the chair, the car was actually parked down by the Legion. And and when the the trucks arrived, there was no sign of a fire. So it was basically an electrical fire underneath the hood that the gentleman was trying to deal with.
So it wasn't a lost car, I think, or just minor damage or not?
No, I'm not sure if you ever got the electrical remnants figured out, but things were getting warm in that, I'm electric.
Okay, I just just can't just go ahead now to our to our remote advisors. Mr. Packwood, do you have anything for the chief?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
And Mr. Bush?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you want to back in?
Yeah, so I'm going back, Mr. Chief, to the first calls. So four assistance not required. Four canceled en route. And so those are, I don't know how those eight specifically relate to four oh one, four sixteen calls, but I just wanted to bring out those two numbers during this portion of your report because when we get into the other portion of the report, which talks about the regional fire services review, I just want to see if there's any we're starting to get any cohesion on dealing with these four oh one, four sixteen calls. So can you tell whether those eight calls are related to four oh one, four sixteen?
Through through the chair, I I could not, I could not give you a definite answer. I would suspect that at least a portion of those would have something to do with our our four hundred series highways.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you. We're going to move on. Thank you, Chief Moore, for your report. And that brings us to seven C. And this is the twenty twenty one operations first quarter report. Mr. Shaw is with us by by remote. And Mr. Shaw, would you highlight your report, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. For section one, the public works, loose gravel in hard top maintenance. Gravel road, road grading continues with spot gravel additions. There's approximately fifty kilometers complete of the grading. Coal patching continues, increasing demand due to hard freezes and thaws. About eight tons of coal patch have been put down so far. About eight tons of coal patch have been put down so far. Seasonal seasonal load restriction signage erected throughout portions of township, seventy eight signs installed. For winter control, there've been fourteen weather-related call-ins. Miscellaneous work staff have been undertaking culvert following and removal obstructions. Sign maintenance, straightening them out, replacing signs from the winter. Roadside garbage pickup continues. Roadside brush and tree removal. Seven several fallen trees have been removed for road allowances. Repair to catch basin in Cardinal, Conner Road culvert CCTV inspected. That's for one of our capital projects. Sidewalk sweeping in both Cardinal and Spenceville in collaboration with the counties was done. We've had seventy two service requests issued and five were outstanding as of April seventh. For the waste transfer site. Hundred and forty vehicles attended the site over thirteen Saturdays in the quarter. Main punch card sales were through PayPal. And there was a total of nine hundred and fifty seven dollars taken in. Staff are still limiting the number of public to enter the transfer station at one time. And spring leaf and brush pickup are planned for May. Environmental services. Flows are good. The the for the for the water treatment plants typical. The parameters are all good. Everything is within compliance. First quarter summary report industrial park again. Everything good there. And our wastewater treatment plant is functioning very well. Parameters for removal, et cetera, at the wastewater plant are all where they should be. Do you have any questions?
Questions, I'll start with our remote advisors again. Mr. Packwood, do you have anything for Mr. Shaw?
Not at this moment. Thank you.
And Mr. Bush?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I'll start with Councilor Hunter.
Just one question on the special lagoons, have we have they been pumped down yet this spring, or when did that?
Through the chair to Councilor Hunter, yes, it has been completed.
No, no problems this year with them?
None that we've seen thus far. We're still waiting. You have to wait. Probably takes two weeks sometimes to get all your samples in. It's just the backlog that they get at this time of year, so you're still waiting on a few sample results, but they they look good, what we have received so far.
Deputy Mayor, no. Mr. Mayor?
So, Mr. Shaw, I'd like to just look for a minute at a couple of flows on the, I'll start with three point seven, the Cardinal wastewater treatment plant. So as I go down the three months, January, February, March. The average daily flow is the highest of all three months. Maximum daily flow is the highest of all three months. And the minimum daily flow is the highest of all three months. And the total flow is the highest of all three months, which tells me that March is sort of the spring thaw month. And at least it was this year. And that tells me that we've still got a fair amount of infiltration into the system. Am I reading that report correctly?
That would be correct.
Do we know, or are we still investigating where the sources of infiltration are coming from?
Through the chair, that's, you know, with that type of thing can be done with studies if if you were counsel had the flavor to put up some monies to to get into the studies. We've been taking the approach because of a lot of the infrastructure is older in Cardinal. We still have a lot of clay sewer mains, et cetera. And we have been doing looking at at the mains and and trying to get some of them done, you know, do one a year or so. Taking a break this year from it, but basically if you look at a clay pipe from a CCTV inspection, typically every joint in them leaks. And you'll see that by crustacean that forms and the minerals that develop it's around them. We've noticed a group quite a large difference in the last couple of years. We haven't been hitting the high flows that we have in the past after doing some of these projects, and we think it's it's moving in the right direction.
Yes, I agree that it's moving in the right direction, but I I take from this report that it that we've still got some distance to go. So my question is, if we came up with a hundred thousand dollars and said to you we'd like to have that hundred thousand dollars dedicated to reducing the worst two or three infiltration points in the system, would you know where to spend that hundred thousand dollars?
In terms of lining, sir?
Well, I don't know what 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 mechanism or what treatment you might use, but we have used lining in the past. Would you be able to place a hundred thousand dollars worth of lining?
Certainly, there's always room for for lining, as it mentioned, with especially some of the older clay pipes. And we have a couple of large mains that also are clay. We did do a few of them, but typically the most of the north is in fairly good shape north of the canal. South of the canal the the streets in the well, both water and sewer, the pipes are older. So we're kind of looking at that area to try and get some of those done.
Now, you said we're taking a break this year.
Correct.
You're not going to address any infiltration issues at all this year?
We we didn't look to do any lining this year. The original plan was to, but withdrawing down on the reserves. We we thought perhaps it would be best just to wait, and the the amount of work we do have to do this year. There's there's quite a few other projects on the go, so. And last year was was the opposite. We did more sewer than water, so we're doing a few more water projects this year and just to to keep the taxes reasonable.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I want to go one other spot on the on the report, which is three point five, which is the windmill pumping station. And so here you see the the flows from that pipe that I was asking Mr. Brendan Bland about. And I'm, I guess the only thing that I'm interested in is to see sort of this report added or come forward again when Mr. Brand Bland gives us his required increase in daily men and daily flows that he's projecting. You heard him say that we may very well we may very well take up the excess capacity that's in that pipe right now. So I'd like to, I'd like to keep on top of that and have a report back from staff as soon as we get that report from Mr. Bland. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Dillabon?
I just have one chair, and that's on page one ninety one of two ninety three. Just a a question probably, do we care, seventy two seventy two service request issue, five outstanding. What's a service request? Just for my own. Is that somebody rates are too high and that kind of stuff? What is that?
Through the chair, service requests are inquiries typically made by residents in regard to services they would like taken, whether it's or or concern over a mired up lawn or something that be from winter operations. In this case, with the five outstanding, we had there several of those were to do with repairs on lawns, which we typically do. And we don't have the topsoil. We just got it recently this month and have started those repairs, so. And any requests, people calling with a fallen tree or need some some brush removed somewhere or complaints about garbage or or different things, they they just call in or email and so forth, we put in a service request, and that's how we address them.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I I just I just have a couple of quick questions on page. Well, on your report, it'd be page two on your whole of the transfer station. I'm just wondering, how many how many people are they limiting inside the transfer station that one down?
Through the chair, I believe it's two to three vehicles at the time.
Okay, thank you. And then the very last one is the spring leaf brush pickup is planned for May, and we did receive from the CA over the dates on those, and also the transfer site will be open free of charge for brushing leave throughout the month of May, is that is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You may have a lineup when that that month hits.
Oh, oh, go ahead, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So follow up, Mr. Shaw, if I can, on page fifty one of which is page one of your report, you referred to the Conner Road culvert for the closed circuit TV inspection on Denton Road. And that issue comes up later on in our agenda. So did that inspection indicate that that existed over holiday or re-lining? A re-lining treatment?
Through the chair to to Mayor Sayo, yes, the CCTV, I had consulted with one of my associates that's involved in lining to inquire about his perception, and he feels it is a good candidate for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaw. So we're going, this, there's no recommendation on this report, so we will move along to seven D, which is the first quarter facilities there is also no recommendation on this, and in your packages, it's on page seven. Well, it goes to, yeah, it goes well, it goes right through the seven. Yes, that's right, yeah. So anyway, Mr. Spencer, I believe you're with us by remote. Would you highlight your report, please?
Yes, I will. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I start, I just wanted to indicate that we had one of our facility, full-time facility operators retire on April first. Valerie Flay, who had been employed with the township for the last ten years, retired, and I just wanted to congratulate her and thank her for her years of service with us. She was a very dedicated and worth trustworthy individual who worked for us, and she certainly will be missed. So moving on to my report. The first part basically breaks down work orders that were performed. I'll just highlight a couple of them. Both arenas, we had our overhead doors inspected as a yearly maintenance on those. There's two at the ingredient arena, and also we have one at the Spencer, which is the actual large lift gate that that goes into the Zamboni room. So those were done. Fire alarm systems were both inspected at both arenas by Falcon Security with no major incidents to report. Cardinal Library, we had the furnace inspected, and we've replaced the furnace. And also, we replaced the air conditioner unit at the Cardinal Library. Did some preliminary work on the docks over the course of in January to have them ready. This was the older ones that were put in in front of the pavilion, so we did a little bit of maintenance on those so that they would be ready to go as well. On page two and page three, I know there was a question, Councilor Dillabon asked about the service request. I use it a little bit different. I mean, there are service requests that come in from my department to do things outside externally. But I also use it as a as a source of being able to have a work list for my staff to do. So when I create work, a service request, then I can print those off and give them to individual staff members as they don't always work a day shift, so I'm able to give those out to individuals that are working on specific days to work on the various tasks. So there I will start now going through and showing you a list of service requests that are done, just to kind of show you over and above just their normal everyday operations. If they're working in the arena, if they're working in the parks, it won't be a service request for footing the ice or cutting grass, but just things that are kind of like over and above that. So that's what page two and three show as the service request. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, again, I'm going to start with our remote advisors. Mr. Packwood, do you have any questions for Mr. Spencer?
No, I don't, but I think he's got a good system in place for keeping track of things. Thank you.
And Mr. Bush?
I have no questions, but it sure looks like he's keeping everybody busy.
Thank you, and I'll start with Councilor Hunter. Any questions or concerns for Mr. Spencer?
I don't think I have any right at the moment.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
No, I'm good too.
Okay, I I do have a couple, but I'll 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 address those last. I'll go to Mr. Mayor.
So, yeah, just just curious, so on on page three of your report, when you get a service request like make sure lights at Johnstown Ball Diamond were working. Is that make sure lights at Cardinal Ball Diamond were working? Replace provincial flags. Are those kinds of requests coming from users of the facilities, or, I mean, what's generating those kinds of requests?
Through the chair to Mr. Mayor, no, that's just me being proactive and making sure that our facilities are ready to go whenever we need them to be used. So that's not like the ball league saying make sure the lights are working. This is just me saying, okay, I know potentially the ball lights are going to be used this spring, so let's go turn them on, make sure that they're all working, and if we need to replace any of the bulbs or any of the ballaces, let's get all that done prior to the actual opening of ball season.
Okay, so I would say the same thing for putting out garbage cans around Spencerville and garbage cans around higher up on that page, put out extra garbage receptacles along Cardinal Waterfront. Again, that's just normal seasonal work then, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dillabon?
I know, I just, just one thing, when you're following up on the ball diamond lights. Mr. Spencer, do we, like, do we check the amperage or anything like that? Or we just turn them on and the lights are working fine? If not, if there's a couple blowing out, we just replace the bulbs and so on? We don't check the amperage or anything like that, do we?
Through the chair to Councilor Dillabon, yes, we we do look at all issues regarding them. We currently at the Johnstown Diamond, we have two of the ballaces that are out. And but other than that, there's no significant issues to report at this present time. The Johnstown ball lights are a very old system. And we actually had a third party come in to go up on the the aerial to change the bulbs. Changing the two ballasts are going to be a little bit more of a challenge because we'll have to have the electrician actually do that. But we won't be doing that till probably midsummer when the infield and the outfield dries up so that we can actually get a boom truck out on the diamond. If we were to take one out there now, we'd just make a a mess on the on the grass.
Your question answered, Councilor? Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, you want back in?
Okay, so just following up on Councilor Dillabon's question, so when we're changing lights and ballasts, are we moving everything to LED?
Through the chair to Mr. Mayor, yes, we are.
Okay, so that's LEDs pictures, pictures and lights, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Mike, I just have a couple of questions on page two and page three of your report. On page two, just at the arenas, the work orders for doing work on the Sambonis, would our staff do that, or would that be outside work, such as change spark plugs and oil and whatnot?
Typically, the service requests are done in-house by our staff. If we have to have something done by a third party, then it it then usually gets created into a work order. But typically, the service requests are are things that are done by my staff, which is what I was wanting to kind of show that over and above, like I said, the everyday normal things that our department is busy, and it's not just that that we take care of.
Yes, thank you. I I do appreciate that. So our staff can tune up the Zamboni and 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 things like that?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and now on the on page three, under fire fire stations, I see towels were delivered and and toilets. I see towels were delivered and toilet paper were delivered. I take it that's coming from a central store area? I, I'm assuming in, in, I guess in Spencerville. And then your staff delivers them as needed?
They just order that stuff. That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you for your report.
You, Sharon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So those two reports, which is actually three of them, seven B, seven C and seven D. I'd like to move that those reports were received and reviewed by the committee.
Do we need a second here for that?
Yeah, it's a motion you do.
Okay, and Counselor Hunter. And so we do have a mover by Mayor Sayo and a second here by Counselor Hunter. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush. Okay, we will, with that, we'll move on to seven E and this is the Regional Fire Service Review. Here we are again. And now is Chief Moore going to speak to this as well as Mayor Sayo?
It's his report. I think he should speak first.
And I think you're right. Mr. Moore?
Thank you for the honor. Doozy is. I'll just say that there's a talk of, of this regional fire service review has been going on for many years and it's, it's nice to nice to have something completed. So a bit of a, bit of a history lesson. In two thousand and eighteen, a workshop was held with the C A Os to look at fire services in Leeds and Grenville for potential opportunities, including a countywide service. Dylan Consulting facilitated a workshop amongst the C A Os and the four agreed upon actions were, were came away from that meeting with these, these four items. Community risk assessment, professional qualifications, services and program review and effective communications. Then again, in late in twenty nineteen, the counties submitted a funding application to the modernization stream for a regional fire services review. In order to meet the program funding requirements, the items agreed to by the C A Os in twenty eighteen were substituted with the ones at the bottom of page one. And so they included eliminating, eliminate duplication and overlap of services, move towards standardization of equipment and fleet, develop consistent levels of service, consistent policies and procedures, reduce costs by sharing administration, training, specialized staff, specialized equipment, fleet maintenance, et cetera. So a committee of C A Os and city managers was formed to evaluate proposals from the R F P. Ultimately, POMAX was selected to do the study. The committee of C A Os from the selection committee eventually agreed to sit in and remain on as the steering committee. At that time, a request for fire service members to sit on the steering committee created an overwhelming response with most every fire chief willing to participate. Unfortunately, sometime went by and then we were informed that the fire service would not be represented on the steering committee. Instead, a, a, a schedule of meetings was set up. So one week was the, the steering committee and the next week was the steering committee and the chiefs. The chiefs and the steering committee, we met on a somewhat regular basis from June to December. And then we received the draft report in January. The fire chiefs were unanimous. There's an order of the attached response. That's the, the second document that was attached. As the general comment, it's unfortunate the report was written in such a negative tone towards our existing efforts. The report, along with the resulting media coverage distressed many volunteers in, in the counties. They're the ones we rely on to provide the services. Stated in the, in the response, we believe that some of the concepts certainly warrant further investigation. Obviously, we can't argue that fire prevention and education are very important. Joint procurement, training and certification, as well as standardized, standardized equipment and procedures were practical. I think they're all, they're all good things for the, for the fire service. Some of those concepts may be successful countywide, others might be more effective at a local level. In the end, fire prevention services is a municipal responsibility and as such, council should consider allowing the chiefs an opportunity to explore the concepts that they show an interest in. Give us a chance to check those out in detail before endorsing a new county fire services task force.
Well, Chief, thank you. Before, I think before we get to questions, I, I think I know Mr. Mayor Sayo wants to, wants to say a few words. So I think maybe before questions or concerns come up, we should hear your side of the pancake.
Well, I guess what I wanted to do is, is reiterate at least two paragraphs from the chief's report. And the first paragraph that I think is worth reiterating is the third paragraph from the bottom of the second page. It is unfortunate the report was written in a negative tone towards existing fire service efforts. The report, along with the resulting media coverage, distressed the very group of volunteers relied upon to provide the fire protection services. Many of us as mayors were very worried that the exercise would have this result. And we were very concerned about it and, and we expressed those concerns at that time. Now, the, the position that we're in right now is basically hinted at in the last paragraph of the letter. Now, the chief has pointed out that, that he and his colleagues did submit a letter to John Hem, 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 Hemities from POMAX Consulting, Inc. And you'll see the letter on the next page. And it's very well written and it's, you know, really speaks for itself. But there are two concepts emerging now. The chiefs are urging from the last paragraph of Mr., of Chief Moore's report, some of the above concepts may be successful countywide, while others may be more effective at a local level. Fire protection services is a municipal responsibility. In the end, it is. And council should consider allowing the fire chiefs an opportunity to explore these concepts in detail before endorsing the creation of a new county's fire services task force. And that is the main recommendation that's coming out of the POMAX report. Well, actually, it's not a recommendation of the report. It's a recommendation from the county C A O as a result of the report. I guess that's a better way of putting it. Now, I have two concerns here. First of all, if the county or if the county, yes, if the county, the other mayors, agree with the creation of a county fire services task force, then I think it's important that our township be proactive and nominate both the C A O and the fire chief to that task force. If they move forward in that, and I think we should go on record as those are our nominees. We're not going to be caught short, short footed here.
Correct.
On the other hand, I kind of, I, I'm kind of agreeing with the chief. We should allow the chiefs themselves an opportunity to explore the concepts above, that, that he's noted above, before endorsing the creation of the, of a task force. So somehow or another, I think we should communicate what our preference is here. If our preference is give the chiefs an opportunity to explore the concepts, then we should state that clearly to county. And you should state that our council should make it clear to me that that's the position that you want me to take when this is discussed at county councils. I need some guidance here as to which way we're going. So that's why I'm glad that the chief was proactive in putting this forward. And, and I'm saying to council, provide me with some direction here and respond to, respond to this, to the United Counties stated, stated intention to create a new county's fire services task force. So open the floor for discussion, Mr. Chair.
I will, I will do that. And once again, I'll start with our remote advisors, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush. Mr. Packwood, you've had a chance to listen to and go over the briefing notes. Any questions or concerns at this time?
I agree what the mayor has stated about having the C A O and the fire chief on that steering committee. But I really agree with the fire chiefs doing their work because they have their finger on the pulse. They know what's been going on and they know where the problems are. And why waste all that expertise? Let them go to work. That's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush.
I, I would be on the same page, I believe, as Mark and what Pat was putting, putting forward as well. Yeah, i- if the chiefs want to, want to take this on just to explore and, and, and use their contacts and, and try and get something in place, then that's, that's great. Yeah.
Okay, then thank you, Mr. Bush. Now I'm going to start with Councilor Dilabah.
I agree with the chief. I'm hoping, well, with us, with the, with the mayor to take it back to council or to the United Counties. And hopefully let our chiefs in each township work that out. I'm only on page sixty-one of the POMAX. I'm reading, from reading it. And my feelings of it, and I've talked to several, several firefighters and several different fire officers in different fire departments. And it was a slap in the face, I think, you know, very negative. There's no question. I just have this, this John Hemmets. He must be mixed up in the EMS because, man, he was all for the EMS. And back and forth and back and forth. So that, that's probably my biggest, and I'm, and I'm only on page sixty, like I said, sixty-one. So, um, yeah, it's a negative. I had one officer thought that it was maybe positive for more, more fire prevention, but I think all the chiefs all the firefighters agree with that. So I'm a hundred percent, hopefully that we can work this out. If we do have that as a committee, we'll have our chief and our C A O on it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'll come back to you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, um, I'd like, Councilor Dilabah, I am working my way through a very difficult, difficult read. It felt a lot like sitting through the fire marshal's training. Listening to, you know, a very different service model. You know, kind of like what the fire marshals suggested at, at the last, like the one we went the first year we were in office.
Yeah, me too. Yes.
It, it felt like that. But reading it, 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 the report read or continues to read for me, a lot like our service delivery review did, where, where there were a lot of, a lot of things in there that, you know, most likely from, definitely from a political level, nobody has any interest in. A lot of, to me, it looked like a lot of money wasted on, on a rather large document that very few people seem to agree with. The, the chiefs, the C A Os and the mayors from, from what I can gather. But, but making my way through the document, you know, trying to find little bits and little bits and little bits where maybe, you know, common buying of equipment. You know, the good relationships that individual municipalities have with, with their neighbors and, and those, you know, those agreements that are in place, I, I think continuing to work on those and, and make them stronger is, is a good way to be better. I, I don't get from that report and from what I've read, at least in the media, that there seems to be a whole lot of will to, to move much of this forward.
Okay, Councilor Hunter?
Well, it's a very complex document. I've read it twice now.
I haven't got through it yet.
There, there's depending on what side of the fence I guess you're on here, I can well see from the fire department side, it feels like a lot of intrusion within their operations. And I think this has happened in a lot of townships. Happened in our township with amalgamation. It's happened in three or four other townships. I know firefighters in them, but it's happened with amalgamation, but departments had had to be brought in under one chief and then didn't work that well for a while and took a lot of working in. I think this is something similar. There's a lot of things I don't agree with in it. I, I think it's creating a, wants to create a top-heavy bureaucracy. Ratepayers are going to pay for it. But there is, I think, a lot of, of good recommendations in it that I think all the fire departments have to really sit down. I agree the chief should have a, have a strong point in this and sitting down and reviewing. Someplace along the line where it was under a county review or however, it's just a, a joint effort by all the townships together. We've got to get our structure under control here, like township to amalgamate it and, and went under one big fire protection service. You look at the equipment they have and you look at the fire responses they're doing, hasn't changed much, but their equipment numbers have dropped a way down. Because instead of having four trucks in every fire station, they have two trucks and two trucks over here. And if they need this here, most fires things you go to is the first two trucks on the scene, the first five minutes on the scene, chief, that depends on what, what it is. Most of the time, that's one or two trucks there for that first five minutes. So the rest is containment after. And I don't see that we need four trucks at every station. It's a point of having two well-equipped trucks, top of the line ones at each one of those stations that's there to do that protection when they get there, whether they're, the top of the line, they're all have capacity to do foam on if it's a carb, oil fire or something or electrical fire, that you have the capacity, you don't have to wait, have the third truck get there before they have that capacity to do that or not. But I, I think the chiefs have all got to get together and work out something. I'd like to see it under the chest. I don't like the county, why, why it's just, we never have liked that. But I think we really got to get together and work together better between the fire departments to, even though it's not amalgamation, say with us, with Kent or something, but, or with Augusta, but we get together. I think we're getting over heavily loaded with equipment. Each fire station that was there before amalgamation still have, had the ID, they got to maintain the whole gambit of equipment at, at that station when there's another station seven miles away and maybe only three miles from where the fire is away, that can bring the rest a lot of equipment there. So I think there really needs to be a heavy discussion there. I, I'm totally against county, countywide until, at the very least, until we get the other system worked out. Maybe once the chiefs all get, can sit down and figure out exactly what each station really needs, not just because we always had this and we should have that, this, but what do we really need for, and it keeps being flooded to us? That we're not going to save a building when we get there. The building in the rural area is lost anyway, so it's fire prevention that we're saying we need to put our emphasis on. So I think we got to look, look at this equipment line and maybe instead of spending four hundred thousand dollars on another fire truck, we spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, on guys going out doing fire prevention and lessons and safety precautions in buildings. We don't need that four hundred thousand dollar truck to go to that building to try and put it out, so.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Mayor, you wanted back in?
Yeah, I did. Because when you read the report, I mean, the report makes basically two premises, two major premises. And the one premise is that we're doing the wrong thing by continuing to buy all this very, very expensive equipment, as Councilor Hunter had just said, where we
as Counselor Hunter had just said, where we should be spending a greater amount of money on fire prevention before the fire starts to stop the fire from starting. Now, that was the one concept that was outlined. The other concept that was outlined was this con- concept of a, of a fire, of a regional fire services department. I can tell you that the concept of a regional fire services department is dead on arrival. There isn't a mayor that I can see at the table that is going to pick up on that. So let's go back to the other one, the concept of more effort on prevention. When you get to the concept of more effort on prevention and let, and less talk about, you know, and I think what he was actually saying without saying it is that it doesn't matter how you cut the cake. What is tending to happen these days is I've, Augusta's got a new fire, uh, station. Prescott's got a new fire station. Maybe we need new fire station. And that's, we're in that right now. Augusta's got a brand-new eight hundred, four hundred thousand dollar tanker. We've got to have a new four hundred thousand dollar tanker because this one that we've got is ten years old. It might only have ten thousand miles on it, but it's ten years old. You know, and, and I saw, there, there becomes in some ways a, a, a sort of a competitive. It's a healthy competition, I think, between departments to keep our equipment as good as their equipment. Where maybe there's a way, a better way of doing things. I mean, I'm gonna give you an example. The county orders, uh, something like nine ambulances at a time. So we put out a tender for nine ambulances, three this year, three next year, and three the year thereafter. All outfitted the same, all standard equipment, and we want the best price for all nine. Within the United Counties, we're probably buying four fire trucks a year. Every one of them custom-built. Is that necessary? Now, that's the kind of thing that I think the chief is asking us to give him and his other chiefs an opportunity to explore those kinds of concepts. And I think that if we give them that opportunity and that, and that time and give them a deadline to come up with some solid recommendations, that would be better than establishing this county's fire services task force. So that's my summary of where I'm, my head is. And unless I get direction to the contrary, that's the kind of concept, and that's the way I'm gonna speak at the county council meeting. I'm not hearing any direction to the contrary, Mr. Chair. I'm finished, yeah.
Agreement more than anything.
Okay, yeah, okay.
The chief, the C E O wants it.
Uh, yes, just before, um, I, I just wanna, I haven't had a chance to speak yet, so just, just before the C E O. Uh, I, I feel that our fire, our fire service in Edgburnsburg Cardinal is top of the line. And, and they, they do a marvelous job. And where better would they know what Edgburnsburg Cardinal needs? They know that. It's, it's already there. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm with the chief, uh, as to, as to his, his comments. And, uh, I, I believe that the inventory of equipment is the, the chief's responsibility to do just exactly that, inventory, inventory of the, the equipment. And if we don't need a truck at number one, we should maybe put something else in number two or vice versa to make sure we have a full complement for a particular fire. But when, when we need it. So, so, uh, that's my, that's my, my two cents, uh, in there. And I guess the next question I have for the chief is regarding Mayor Seo's timeline report. Uh, what kind of a timeline do you think he would need? Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm so sorry, Mr. C E O.
That's okay.
Before we go there, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I, I, I'm in a little bit of an awkward situation as I, I, I was on the, uh, part of the steering committee on, on, on this report. And, and, and part of that recommendation with respect to the task force was an option, so number one, that, uh, that the entire report doesn't get placed on the shelf and collect dust. There, there is, um, I think we can all agree, and, and I know that the chiefs do as well, that there is some value in this report. And we need to ensure that, that those parts that are valuable get progressed. And I do believe that, uh, it's not necessarily progressed the best from an external driven. It, it's more internally driven. And, and, and I do believe that the fire chiefs are in the best position to, uh, advance some, some of those items. Uh, but one thing that, uh, has been mentioned by the, by the mayor, it sort of needs to be a timeline established with a work plan on what they're going to focus in on and what those outcomes are going to be. So that hopefully we can continue to advance this and not necessarily need to go to that task force. But really that task force was to, uh, to, to, a- as an option to, to ensure that, that the report doesn't go completely by the wayside. So.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a fallback position.
It wa- it, it certainly was a fallback position.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. C E O.
So, Mr. Chair, so to the C E O, what is the best way for us as a, as a, as a governing body? What's the best way for us to respond to you?
Uh, well, through, through, through the chair, I, I, I think you summarized it pretty well, but what I, what I would sort of, um, probably re- re- request is that, is that committee or council set a timeline for, uh, for, for the chief and myself to come back uh, with, 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 with a work plan with respect to progressing some of those items that the, uh, that the fire chiefs sort of uh, have unanimously kind of agreed to that, that, that can proceed forward.
So, Mr. C E O, do you, between, between the chief and yourself, do you have, uh, a date, a timeline date that, uh, that, uh, this could be, uh, brought back?
Uh, well, my, my initial thought is sort of, uh, six months, just, just because, uh, I, I think that, uh, it certainly is dependent on some of the other municipalities sort of reinforcing that same message that, that that they want the, uh, the, the, the fire chiefs to, to, to collaborate and, and be the drivers, uh, of, of, of some, some, some of those recommendations.
I see. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
So, so, Mr., through you to the chief. Uh, chief, uh, do, do you think that the thirteen chiefs involved here, um, you, I'm going to the last, to the last paragraph of your letter, uh, where you say, give us some time, give the chiefs some time. Would that be, um, pretty much endorsed by the majority of the chiefs?
Through the chair, to be honest with you, I'm really not sure the status of, uh, of any of the other chiefs at this point. I'm not sure if anybody else has, uh, has made a trip to council yet. Or if they are, uh, you going with the same, uh, the same idea I am.
Oh, seriously?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, you're gonna be meeting with them again.
Yes.
Okay, and you, I think you said towards the end of this month.
Correct.
Okay, now, the reason I'm saying that, Mr. Chairman, is this. Um, I, I'm, I'm hopeful, and I, I think the proper way for us to proceed here is to have the C E O, uh, and perhaps the chief, put together some sort of a resolution that can come to county, that can come to our council meeting next, uh, Monday night, which would say, uh, which we would direct to the C E O of the United Counties. And we would say in that resolution that, you know, while it has been, uh, suggested that a new county's fire services task force be established, our position is that we would prefer that the thirteen chiefs, uh, meet together as a group uh, to examine the following concepts and report back, uh, within six months. And we put that in a resolution and get that into United Counties. Uh, we want, obviously won't meet the April meeting of United Counties, which is this week, Thursday. But we would get it there in time for the, uh, committee of the whole meeting, uh, the first week of, of May. And I think that might be enough to sort of tip the scale away from the, the fire services task force. Throw the problem back in the hands of the chief for at least six months. Now, I don't know, Mr. Seo, is that a dangerous way to proceed or should we, or should we might maybe let them go ahead and establish their task force? I mean, I'm not trying to get you and the chief talking at odds and, on odds and sods here, but we gotta go one way or the other, and I don't want to send mixed messages.
Correct. So I, I think that the greatest potential and opportunity exists by, driven by the fire chiefs. And, and to, to my line of thinking, within six months, if, if, uh, you know, if a reasonable work plan can't come forward, then I, I, then, then I would, you know, um, I, I would certainly suggest the task force if, you know, if, if there's enough willingness, right? If, un- unfortunately, if, if, uh, half of the municipalities don't want to participate in either way, it really makes it difficult for, um, uh, any, any kind of, uh, major change to be instituted. But there's nothing to say that potentially, uh, four or five, uh, you know, uh, a- a- adjacent municipalities can't come up with something.
So, yes, but my worry, through the chair, my worry is this, that if the chiefs, if there isn't enough will from all the municipalities for the chiefs to get, to go to work on this and come up with something within six months, my worry is that a task force will be established by the counties and that the task force will mandate centralized buying, cheap stuff, you know, they'll pick the low-hanging fruit, common SCADA equipment, common, common, uh, standards for trucks, uh, common, you know, uh, fire gear, bunker gear, that kind of stuff, joint purchasing. They'll pick, the task force, if it's established, will pick the easy stuff. That's what they'll do. And the chiefs can pick that just as easy.
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, so through, through the chair, even, even more reason for the, uh, fire chiefs to unite and, uh, and, and, and move us forward.
So, can you proceed on the, on the basis that there's gonna be some sort of a resolution to this effect coming at county, at township council on Monday night?
On, on Monday, uh, Mr. C E O, is that timeframe suitable?
We will, we will, between the two of us, we'll prepare a, 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 a resolution.
Perfect. Thank you much, Mr. Chair. We can now move on. Unless there's any other questions or concerns. Hearing none, we'll move on to seven F. Uh, this has a recommendation attached to it, and this is the Connel Road Culbert Eastment, uh, uh, agreement. And, um, Mr. Grant, are you, uh, going to highlight, uh, this report for us?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe the Director of Operations is going to speak to this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is an action item. Uh, purposes to enter into an easement agreement with Dave Stevens and she, Shelley Adams at seven-two-four-one Connel Road in order to access municipal infrastructure and complete the Ventnor Greenwich Capital Project approved in twenty-twenty. Um, background is basically this is a stormwater infrastructure crosses Connel Road uh, through private property, lot fifteen concession seven, is in close proximity to the residence at seven-two-four-one Connel Road. There's a tax drawing to kind of give you an idea. You could see that, that the, uh, pipe runs rather close to, to the garage on the house. Um, it almost looks like it's touching or going under it, but it's actually the overhang of the, uh, the roof, so it's, uh, very close there. Uh, which makes, uh, digging or anything like that kind of difficult. There, there was an agreement drawn up and, and was developed between the solicitors for each side. And that's attached for committee's review. This is similar agreement to the South Street property at Spencerville completed last year. The, uh, policy implications and easement agreement is required before commencing work on any private property. Eastman agreements are not delegated authority and council approval is required to execute the easement documents. Financial considerations, the township will pay reasonable legal fees incurred by the transferers in connection with the negotiations of this agreement and conveyance of, of permanent easement plans upon receipt when itemized statement of account within the reasonable time after the closing date. The committee, the recommendation that committee recommends that council enter into an easement agreement with Dave Stevens and Shelley Adams at seven-two-four-one Connel Road and authorize mayor and C E O to execute easement agreement.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Uh, all right, committee, you've had a chance to read the briefing notes. Any questions or concerns? And I'll start with, uh, uh, Counselor Hunter, uh.
No, I have no concerns, really.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Nope.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
And, uh, Counselor Dilabah?
No.
And I'm going to go to our two remote advisors, uh, Mr. Packwood?
No concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
No.
Thank you, and thank you for reading the, uh, recommendation, uh, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Shaw. And, uh, do I have a mover for the recommendation? Counselor Hunter, do I have a second here? Counselor Dilabah, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carry. That moves us on now to seven G, uh, which is the, uh, uh, Schneider Electric, uh, SCADA Support Services Agreement. And, uh, am I correct with Mr. Shaw, uh, highlighting this?
Correct, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
There also is a recommendation, uh, in the briefing note. And, uh, anyway, Mr. Shaw, carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the pur- purpose of this action item is to receive approval to enter into a three-year renewal support services agreement with Schneider Electric. The background, basically a service and support agreement for our SCADA Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition System. Uh, maintenance dates back to the late nineties. The original provider, this system group was acquired by Snyder Electric in January twenty-fourteen. Schneider Electric's a global specialist in, uh, energy management. The SCADA system is an essential and critical element in daily processes control and achieving regulatory compliance for our water and sewer operations. Uh, back in two thousand and six, or since two thousand and six, a township moved to a three-year service and support agreement to achieve increased savings. Uh, agreement provides access to technical support schedule, preventative maintenance visits, accelerated shipment of materials and equipment, priority onsite corrective assistance, discounts on hardware upgrades and annual life cycle evaluations. Uh, agreement over the past twenty-plus years has been benefited this township in cost savings during upgrades, increased reliability and reduced system downtime. Uh, policy implications by law, twenty-fifteen fifty-seven establishes policies with respect to procurement of goods and services, states that all expenditure exceeding fifty thousand dollars shall require council approval. Purchases may be made through a single source without quotation or tenders where the compatibility of purchase with the existing equipment and/or facilities is of paramount consideration, and that purchase must be made from a single source. The financial considerations, the, there's a scheduled payments on there. Uh, May first, twenty-twenty-one to April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. That is, uh, thirty thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars, and that is a seven-point-four percent increase. Believe the last three-year cycle was about a six-point-eight, somewhere in that area. Um, for the first year and, uh, typical two-point-two percent increase for the following two years. The previous year, May twenty-twenty to April thirty-twenty-one, the annual cost was twenty-eight thousand seven fifty-eight. Recommendation that, uh, committee recommends that council enter into a three-year renewal support and services agreement with Schneider Electric and authorize staff to execute the agreement.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Shaw. On the dollar and cent increase for year one, if we get hit with forty-one hundred dollars, and then the second and third year is just in the under seven hundred dollar, uh, dollar range, which, uh, looks is a two-point-two percent, uh, percent increase. Um, okay, uh, any questions or concerns, committee? I'll, I'll start with, uh, Counselor Dilabah this time?
Uh, no, we don't have a lot of choice in these, well, there's no other competition.
So, so, sorry, through, through, through the chair, I'll, I'll, I'll answer that. Not with there the considerable investment of, 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 of mind.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but just, uh, through the chair, if I may.
Yes.
To, uh, through the mayor, through the chair and through the C E O, to Mr. Shaw. Mr. Shaw, uh, when you're Mr. Shaw, when you're preparing these recommendations, I, I just point out to you that the financial considerations that you outlined above are part of a report, but they're not part of the recommendation. And I'm sure that what you want the recommendation to say, that we enter into a three-year renewal support agreement with Schneider Electric for the period of May first, twenty twenty-one to April the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at a total cost of XXX. And, and I would just encourage you to construct the recommendations in such a way that the main thrust of the recommendation, and the main thrust of the report is embodied in the recommendation. Otherwise, the recommendation just stand alone by itself, doesn't have all of these references to it. So, you know, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to move the recommendation, but I would like that little chart that in the financial considerations added to the recommendation.
So through, through, through the chair, I, I will take responsibility on that particular one, and we'll, we'll adjust that slightly to incorporate the total dollar amount for that three-year period. Just a friendly amendment, Ken.
Well, it's not an amendment because the motion's not on the, on the chair, on the floor. I'll, I'll put it, I'll put it on the floor without adding to it.
Okay. And the CAO has indicated that, that will be done. So I have a mover with Mayor Sayo. Are there any, any other questions or concerns before I? Hearing none from our remote advisors, any questions or concerns?
Two seconds.
It hasn't been done yet. Okay, hearing none, hearing none from our second. We have a seconder with Deputy Mayor Deschamp, and the amendment or the recommendation will, will read as it is, including the financial numbers from, from above. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Thank you. So, Mr. CAO, everything is fine there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, did you, did you need, need me to read that recommendation with that inserted? Or is it pretty comfortable?
I think committee was comfortable when they wrote it. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to seven H, which is a recreation and facilities, and it's regarding the waterfront canteen reopening for the twenty twenty-one season. Mr. Spencer, will you highlight your, your report, please?
Yes, I would. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Our current plan now is, is to have the canteen open for June the eleventh. There was some discussion at our last committee meeting by Council Dilabon, I believe, as to whether or not we should be looking to extend the hours during the daytime. Some of this report is basically the carbon copy of the report that you got in October that breaks down the daily use. Basically, it shows the charts on, on, on the bottom page, basically shows that the weekends were the busiest times during the twenty twenty season. Our weekday, our weekdays were not as busy. Basically showing the amount that was brought in each day. Counselor Dilabon had indicated that he'd like to see the hours extended Monday to Friday. If we were to do that, we basically are taking half of what was brought in last year and adding that to a full day. So it would show what you would bring in potentially. Is still not enough to cover the expenses of having a staff member work there. So this is not a recommendation, this is just information. Ultimately, the decision is up to you. I anticipate that with the COVID restrictions, that I, I'm sure it will be as busy as it was down there this year as it was, or like last year, it'll be that busy again this year. But in saying that, we did, when we first opened the canteen years ago, we did operate seven days a week during the day, and we scaled that back five years ago because the receipts during the day, Monday to Friday, were just not worth the expense of having to pay the staff to be down there. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, so, Mr. Spencer, last, last, last year, because through, now, I'm just talking through the week, the canteen was not open until later on in the afternoon. However, due to the situation with COVID and whatnot, I, I noticed myself a tremendous amount of people at that park taking advantage of the sunshine and the, and the good weather, and I guess the fact they could just actually get out of the, get out of the house to, to do something. So by not being open, we wouldn't know whether or not those people would spend money down there or not. It's, it's sort of roll the dice. I'm, I'm of the belief that we would have, we would have done a little bit better throughout the day, and it somewhat proves it on the weekend because you're open earlier on the weekend and you do a little bit better business. That could be, that could be the reason right there, or, or one of the reasons. But with that, with that, with that said, I'm just going to, I'm going to turn it over to the committee for discussion because there is no recommendation here. So I'll, I'll, I'll start with Counselor Dilabon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think, I don't really want to look at this as an economic issue. I wanna, I don't think their pool is going to be open, a good possibility this year again. I just want something to offer our residents of the township and surrounding area. And if we have to go to reserves and recreation to offset that, I do not have a problem with it at all. I think we could increase it maybe with more sales of different products, like pizzas, stuff like that, maybe we could help to increase the sales. But I, I'm not, I'm in favor of opening up at eleven o'clock because we need something for the people, and you're right, it was very, very busy last year through the day. And we didn't open up till the, I think, my June twenty-eighth last year.
Through the chair to Counselor Dilabon, yes, and again, that was because of COVID. But this year, we plan to open for June the eleventh, which is, we're hoping, fingers crossed, the week after sad flies are done.
We don't have many sad flies anymore. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, I, I'm sort of in between here because I, I think, I think what I would rather do is get it open according to the plan that, that the staff has in place. Monitor the sales closely, see what the demand is during the week. I mean, it, it's, it's still, it's just that we're not, you're still opening at eleven during the week. You're just not opening earlier than eleven. Is that the idea?
No, through the week, they open at four thirty.
Oh, through the week, they open at four thirty, right. It's on the weekends that they open at eleven.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to, I'd like to start with the, with the longer hours on the weekend and then just see how it progresses and see what, see what they, see what the business is like. You can always add hours, you know, as you get into July and people are moving around more, you can add hours. Nothing that says that just because you're starting at eleven thirty on Saturday and Sunday, you can't do that on Friday and Thursday. You can add hours, and, and there's a big difference between adding hours on Thursday or Friday and adding hours Monday to Friday. You know, I mean, it's all a question of jiggling staff and jiggling hours, and I think you can, I think you can jiggle them. I don't think we have to go black or white, let the staff work, let the staff watch the, see whether they're opening. Watch the margins too. I don't think our margins are correct. Well, it's tax dollars you're talking about.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I would echo both the concerns of Counselor Dilabon and some of the same ones of the, of the mayor. But I, I think from a small business standpoint, and you know, I see the canteen as, as a, as a service. But we, around this table, I think liken it to a small business. And, and I think one thing you need, if you're going to run it as a small business, is definitely consistency of your new hours. Can't be jumping up and down and all over the place. Pick some hours and, and those the hours go with. And we're going to have new hours, which I would support. I just think from our social media standpoint, we just need to really promote the, the new hours that are there. Make sure that people know that the canteen will be open from eleven o'clock until seven thirty or eight, or whatever it is. And, and, you know, throw in a disclaimer with it as well, you know, if, if, you know, council's trying it on a, on a, this summer basis, and if it's not supportive, then, then it wouldn't continue.
Sorry, Counselor Hunter?
Well, I don't agree with sending them at all, especially at this time. I run restaurants too. I can, you shut down this weekend, you're not allowed to sell themselves. So we got four or five small restaurants in, in Cardinal that's trying to hang on to the skin of their teeth. I don't think we need to be competing against them by adding extra hours during the week. Lots of places are, somebody's down there, they want to go and pick up a sandwich or a hamburger or something, take down or eat. There, there, there's lots of places in Cardinal do. I think you gotta, you gotta look at your small business restaurants everywhere. We're not in the business to compete, compete against. We're having a hard time hanging on as there is. People going down there, they drive right in, coming off four sixteen out in there, come down number two, they drive right by two or three places, they can stop, pick up a pizza, pick up a sub or something to take down. We're gonna have benches down there, a place to, to eat. Weekend, sure, because everybody's partying on the weekends and their boats is up, they're pulling in, one a dock, and the kids are, let the kids out to play and have a nice drink going or something. Yeah, that's a ser- service we're doing. We're never gonna make money on it. We never did, never will. But it's a service on the weekends. I don't think we need to be competing against her once during the week, so.
Now, to our remote, to our remote, just a moment, Counselor, to our remote advisors, Mr. Packwood.
Yes, last summer, we were down to the park down there, and I must admit, it's a real gem in the township. And we would go down there at least three, four times a week, and the number of people that were sitting there in lawn chairs, having a good time, social distancing, and having something to eat, I don't know where they got it, some had coolers and some didn't. A lot of times, the parking lot was jammed with boat, boat trailers, and it was just a great place for people to be. And so we did lose fifty-six hundred dollars last year on the canteen. So what? It's a small amount to, to suffer just for being there. So if people can get something, that's great. If they go along with restaurants and get something, that's also fun. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Bush?
I, I think I'd agree with extending.
Sir, we can't hear you, John.
Nothing at all?
We can hear you, but not very loud.
You're very weak. Does Rebecca, does the clerk control?
No, he controls it like.
I think it's my computer, there's something wrong. I agree with extending the hours.
Oh, you've got to sneak more directly into the mic.
I agree with extending the hours more. Maybe not Monday and Tuesday, but I believe the rest of the week, it would be worth it. I know personally, when we go there with our kids, we're usually there around lunchtime, not at supper time.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Bush. Okay. And now, Mr. Mayor, you, I believe you wanted back in?
Well, I'm.
I'm sorry, Counselor. Yes, go ahead.
Just argument with John, everyone, about taking business away from those people. We wouldn't be taking away business from those people at all. We wouldn't be helping them because we could sell their pizzas down there and pizza slices and, and a Pepsi and so on. We could go up to Nicky's and buy two or three large pizzas and sell them down there, or Scorpion's next week. So we're not hurting those restaurants by no means. We're probably helping them by buying their product, and that's a good way to do it, is going to get their pizzas and selling slices.
That's interesting. So you're suggesting going and, and purchasing, making a deal with, with those restaurants to carry, carry their product?
Absolutely.
That's an interesting concept.
We're not doing that, though.
No, we're not at the moment, no.
But I mean, what a great opportunity for both parties, you know, that's all I'm saying. And I'm gonna go maybe Monday to Friday, maybe say Wednesday to Friday, that's all, from eleven to two.
Okay, okay. Pardon?
I said, if I may jump in for one second, just in regards to the, the pizza idea. We have, we have tried that in both of our arenas, and it has not been a successful venture.
But maybe, maybe it was the time of year. I don't know. If you try it at the arenas, that sounds to me more wintertime than summertime.
It's funny because I talked to him.
But anyway, okay, Mr. Mayor, you wanted in? Go ahead.
Well, first of all, can you tell, can you indicate or give us some indication of why it wasn't a successful venture?
What, through the chair to Mr. Mayor, through a, a couple of our turnip mics that we had in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, we would purchase, whether it be in Spencerville at the Spencers, at the Village Pantry or in Cardinal at, at one of the restaurants, and we would just buy a couple of large pizzas and bring them over and sell them by the slice, and they weren't always sold out. So we were either just breaking even, or we lost a little bit of money, but we certainly didn't make any money. So we have tried it, but it wasn't a successful venture.
Counselor Hunter's point, and, you know, I think Counselor Hunter's point is, hits me pretty heavy. I don't think we need to be competing with some of the, some of the ones that are already there. We are providing a service. I understand that. You know, it's more providing a service than operating a business, but I don't think we can discount the one at the expense of the other. And, and the briefing note also indicates there is also a chip wagon proposed in Cardinal this summer season that may be located near Highway Two, so.
It's already there.
We heard it's there.
It's already there. It's beside the Circle K. I just don't know if it's opened up yet.
Yeah, it's already there, no, make it a bus.
But staff is still inquiring on that, are you not?
Through, through, through the chair, there's still some, some, some work and processes to go through with, with respect to that.
And will that, will that come to council? Or not?
Typically, typically it wouldn't if it meant everything. If it, if it requires tight plant control, then yes, it would, it would be coming back to committee.
But just to, just to open it, wouldn't need to, eh?
It typically would not need to. That is correct.
Okay, because again, that, that for sure, for sure, is competing with our, with our existing businesses that are there. And I know, I, I know I've heard some opposition to it, but however, so. Did you want back in?
I do, and it's just more to, I know in the past, I think, maybe Counselor Dilabon even raised this last year about possibly allowing one of the local businesses to run the canteen. You know, if we're not interested in offering more service to residents, and we're losing money from a business perspective, so we're, we don't want to offer more service and we don't want to lose more money. I mean, is it at some point worth it, if, if one of those private, small businesses that already exist are wanting to take it on, is it maybe worthwhile making, making it available to them to see if they want to increase the service level and to take their.
Well, I, I, I think it would be up to the proprietor of the business to come to us and make a proposal. Well, I, I, I think it would be up to the proprietor of the business to come to us and make a proposal. So far, we've heard nothing.
Well, when we need a new truck, we don't, we don't wait for them to come to us. We we put it out to them and ask them, and ask for proposals.
Yes, yeah, but we're dealing with slight, slight, slightly different, different situation.
Well, I think that's an idea that should be explored, Mister Chair.
Well, that's
Stand look beautiful down there beside there.
A what?
Chip stand.
I think we have a bylaw against that, I think. I'm pretty sure we do.
I don't know, I just, I just think, you know, like, taking um into account what I, whatever counselors uh said around the table, I mean, that just seems to be the logical you know, the logical end to this. Uh, we don't, we don't wanna increase service and and from a business perspective, we have lost money and we don't wanna lose anymore. It just seems sense that if if a business person wants to take on a little bit of risk to, you know, see what we can do to support them to do that.
So are you suggesting then that staff uh canvas the uh canvas the businesses in that business to see if they wanna take it over?
Just throwing out another alternative to what, to what, you know, what we're already discussing. It's up to committee to decide what, what, what they would like to do. I mean, it just seems to make a little bit of sense to me.
That's the way it was started by the Lions Club started in the first place, that's how it run.
Well
For years.
You think about the dock side and and um, you know, Linda and and her husband there in Morseburg and they they do a bang up job, you know, making money for, and I think it's Lions Club there too, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, they do a fantastic job. But not that our guy, not that our people don't. Um, but it just seems that, you know, somebody else wants to take the risk, maybe now's the time to do it, so.
The big difference is when we take a loss, there we, it costs us dollars when we live in the pride, business person runs it for the year. It's costing them time, not dollars. They're working it themselves most of the months. It'll be a one or two personal op- operation. Now, whoever you get anybody that's interested in it, but most people say, we're gonna do it, the first thing they wanna do is ask Mike, what did you sell? How much did you take in down there last year and had a restaurant or runner myself, I left the numbers there. I'd be pretty shy, but we're there's not profit there to be had, so.
Well.
Pretty, I don't know that that's for us to decide.
Well, I know, it's not for us, but I just said that you might, I see the prospect of doing it, but when we're how much of an interest we get in it and then we'd have to it'd have to be a pretty, might have to have a pretty restrictive thing because it's all our building and all our equipment and stuff in there. It'd have to be a pretty hard drawn thing, but quality of the equipment and the maintenance of it and one thing or other too, so.
So, anyway, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to to speak to our our pro or con. Uh, I, I would like to see extended hours. I'm not saying it has to be every day. But I would, I would like to see uh staff take a uh very hard look at maybe on Wednesday and Friday or Thursday and Friday, just, just dates put out there to do an experiment and and open at eleven o'clock to see how, to see it, to see how the lunch, uh, the lunch group went. And uh and then uh, and then uh come back and tell us how, what the uh, what what the feeling is. And at the same time, if uh, if uh, if staff wanted to canvas the existing restaurants for a takeover or proprietor takeover, um that would be in your court as well. Um, I I just, with the number of times that I was down there last uh last summer, which is almost every day uh weather permitting, there was a lot, a lot of people down there. And this is, and I'm, I'm, I'm talking late, late morning through the afternoon. Um, so there's no, there, there's no recommendation here. Uh, you've heard committees uh committees um concerns. Um, I guess uh I'm going to refer to the CAOs to what are the next steps? Or what should the next steps be?
So Mister, Mister Chair, the committee wants to direct staff to return next month with a report on uh on on the expansion for, let's say, on Thursday and Friday with a a a little bit more of a business plan. Then we can do that.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be fine.
Is that the wish of committee?
We don't, we need a, we don't need a motion, do we?
I I I would prefer if there was.
About, okay, would somebody uh, would somebody pan a motion, Mister Counselor?
I'd like to, I'd like to have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday if I could. Could you do a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday business plan and a Thursday, Friday?
Would you make a motion to that effect?
Would that be okay, Mister CEO?
Sure, sure.
Okay, would I have a second here for that?
Yeah, I'll second it for sure.
We have a second here? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor? One, two, three, four? Yeah.
Lost two, two up top.
And two up top. Thank you, uh, thank you, gentlemen. So we will bring that back to the next.
To me, uh, may, may public works.
Thank you, that'll be perfect. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just bear with me for a moment here, please. So that brings us now to item eight, council inquiries, notices of motion. Hearing none?
No, wait a minute. Okay, so nobody else?
I see no one.
Okay, so I'm just uh putting a notice of motion forward here then. Uh, just to get it on the record, I'll be bringing a motion forward if I can get it together in time uh for the council meeting next week, uh requesting a ministerial zoning order uh for the lands in the Edwardsburg Land Bank. I'll be speaking to, more about that when we go into ca- into the in camera session. But just so that that's on the record here right now.
Okay, thank you. No other inquiries, no other notices of motion? Um, I had, I had an inquiry, I have an inquiry uh with the uh, with with some of the new rules with COVID that just came down uh over, basically over the weekend and then some of them were, were retracted. I had an inquiry for staff uh regarding uh members of uh council and or committees. Um, should we be supplied with a letter uh from the township stating that uh we are uh required to be on site and travel on certain days of the of of the month? However, now that, now that Mister Ford's um policing situation has changed a little bit, uh I'm just wondering if that is, should be still, still should be required or uh what is, uh what is committees uh feeling on us having a uh a letter on our person when we're traveling?
Well, the 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 C O provided us with a letter last time around, did you not?
I don't think so.
I I I I do believe that that letter was provided.
Yeah, I had it in my pocket for a long, long time and I lost it. And basically, it just tells that you're an elected official.
Yes.
The the fact, the fact that you're an elected official attending a meeting is sufficient for anybody, really. So
Without, without a letter.
No, 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 the, I mean, if you wanna carry, I carry a business card in my card, in my pockets, but the letter that I had from the C O and the township letterhead was, I just held it in my pocket. We had one from work too. Given this permission.
Okay, good enough, we uh
It's just identifying who we are.
If a business carried is fine, uh that's, that's safe step, the problems, that's
And 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 I really suspect with the with uh with the the information o- o- over the weekend that it's, it it's uh very unlikely that uh, that that O P P will be stopping you, your, your vehicle.
I, I agree. Okay, thank you. That's all I had, so nothing else. Uh, now we've moved to item nine, which is the mayor's report. Mister Mayor?
All right, so I already spoke about the meeting with the O P P meeting, which was, which I again is Wednesday, April the twenty first. Uh, the mayors in the, were all informed today uh that we, we would be receiving or we would be invited to attend, I guess that's the best way of putting it, all four hundred and forty-four of us uh to a uh, to a meeting with uh Premier Ford, Deputy Premier Elliott, Solicitor General Jones and Minister Clark. The meeting was originally scheduled for tomorrow and then late this afternoon, I got another note from them indicating that that, that the meeting will be held on Friday, April the twenty-third. It'll be a call-in meeting or a Zoom meeting of some sho- sort and as of this last uh uh note telling us that it's gonna be April the twenty-third, no times were given. So sometime between now and then, I'll let you know when it's gonna take place. Again, I can't I can't get you included on the call, but if there's sufficient interest that you wanna uh, that you wanna audit the meeting, uh I'll take the meeting here and you can be here. Uh, last thing in the part of the mayor's report is that uh late this afternoon, I had a uh a communication from the mayor of Smith Gatkey of Leeds and the Thousand Islands indicating that she had declared an emergency in township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. Uh, she declared that emergency this morning in an effort of, in an effort to keep the returning American visitors and other visitors away from the township. So uh, I just bring that to your attention. Uh, I'm not recommending such an, an action here. I'd like to hear more about what's gonna be said on Friday. So those are my items and I'll have a lot more to say when we get into the in camera session.
Okay, that brings us to item ten, which is question period and I see nothing coming forth. Now, we do have a closed session and uh um, does someone have the motion to go into closed session?
I got closed meeting, I got closed meeting with the committee. I got the adjourn on that though.
I got time on. And we're starting with Deputy Mayor Deshna, the committee proceeding to close session eight fifty-two in order to address a matter pertaining to section two thirty-nine, two seat proposal pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board specifically at the third land bank job site challenge.
Thank you. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, will I take a five minute, five minute uh uh comfort break?
We're gonna go.
We're gonna go.
Second by Mayor Sayad that the closed meeting, the committee does now adjourn and open meeting does now resume at nine forty-eight P M.
Forty-eight?
Nine, nine. Nine twenty-eight, sorry, nine twenty-eight.
Really, really, really got something, uh, really got something done, Mister Chair. Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
That's carried. Okay, reporting, now that we're in open session, reporting uh in open session, uh, we uh council committee discussed a uh proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of of land by the municipality or local board, specifically the Edwardsburg Cardinal Land Bank Job Site Challenge. That's all.
Okay, so we're done, so
So.
All matters are dealt with, we get all, everything else done. So moved by myself and seconded by Counselor John Hunter. The committee is now adjourned at nine thirty P M. There you go, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, gentlemen, uh, from the advisory, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.